Good evening, I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of September 11th, 2017. The time is 7:30 PM. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
And Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilman Soltis and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tonight, as we bow our heads and open this meeting in conscious reflection of the great responsibility that is given to us as city leaders, I would like to say thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for trusting us with this great responsibility to guide this community in an attempt to not only achieve the goals laid out before us tonight's agenda, but to make us a better future for Madison Heights. Tonight, as we celebrate the anniversary of what we have come to know as 9/11, words are not enough to express the immensity of what we have been through and will continue to go through. So it is more than appropriate this evening to remember and honor those who have given the ultimate sacrifice to our great country. At this time, I would ask that we take a moment of silence to view this video tribute to the 14 Michigan first responders and military personnel who died while serving us, our great state, our great county during the last year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Before we begin the agenda, we have some very somber news, and I'd like to read a portion of a press release that the city issued tonight. It's with heavy hearts that we announce the passing of former Mayor Ed Swanson at the age of 87. Ed Swanson died September 10th, 2017. He was born May 11th, 1930. Ed Swanson was first elected as the mayor of the city of Madison Heights in November 1999, serving in that capacity for 16 years until November 2015. He was the second longest-serving mayor in the history of the city. Ed was truly committed to the city of Madison Heights, evidenced by his countless contributions and the legacy that he and his wife built here. Ed worked tirelessly for economic, cultural, and quality of life issues, including his support of our public library. Ed and his wife Elaine spearheaded the fundraising efforts to save the city's tree lighting ceremony and the nature center's popular fall festival. We honor Mayor Ed Swanson's legacy and extend our deepest condolences to his family at this difficult time. City flags will be flown at half-staff in honor and remembrance of Mayor Swanson. Visitation will be held at Edward Swanson and Son Funeral Home on Dequinder on Thursday, September 14th from 4:00 to 8:00 PM and Friday, September 15th from 2:00 to 8:00 PM, with funeral services Saturday, September 16th at 10:30 AM at the Edward Swanson and Son Funeral Home. Goodbye, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, we have to pivot to the business. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's work? All right, hearing none, we can skip through presentations and public hearings. Are there reports on the agenda of interest to parties in the audience? Okay, we'll go to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity to address city council on any subject. If you'd please be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and it's optional, which means it's not required, if you give your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens, is going to have another third Tuesday meeting this September 19th at 7:00 PM, and it's going to be at Wilkinson Middle School. Snacks and beverages are going to be on us. Everyone is welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject?
Hi, I'm Rosalind Graffstein. Mayor Hartwell, thank you for those kind words about Mayor Swanson. I met Mayor Swanson on my wedding day at City Hall. He made me laugh and cry at the same time. And when my oldest daughter was a few months old, we stopped by City Hall to visit Mayor Swanson, and he put her in his chair and said, "When she is older, make sure to tell her about the time she's had in the mayor's chair." We would see him at the tree lighting, or the parade, or even at the store, and he always had a smile for us. And he called me the woman he married. Well, until the issue of hens came up, and he along with others called me the chicken lady. I saw Mr. and Mrs. Swanson a few times last month at their home, and he was in good spirits. And his mind was sharp as a tack, and he was amazed when I showed him the boot and year my husband made for our wedding, and he laughed when I said we also had the homemade bouquet, but it was too big, and he reminded me of my Uncle Vic. And I said I would stop by and call again the end of the month, but then things got busy with the kids, and that didn't happen. Mayor Swanson was a good man, and he cared for our city. He left the limelight two years ago, but he never left my heart. And those of us who had the good fortune to hear his stories are better people for having that experience. Oh, that just went on. So, thank you, Mayor Swanson, for everything that you have done.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting is open to the public? All right, no one's asked to be recognized, we'll continue. There are no communications, nor are there reports or items for future public hearings, so we'll go to item F1, a bid award or purchase from the fire chief. Mr. Myers, will you give a report?
Yes, Your Honor. The Fire Department is recommending that city council approve a professional services agreement with BRICS Incorporated to provide the Fire Department with an Internet Protocol or IP-based fire station alerting system. Included in this agreement, BRICS will provide a computer-aided dispatch mapping software at no charge. A little bit of history, in early 2016, the Fire Department formed a committee to thoroughly analyze and provide a recommendation to improve and enhance the Fire Department's mapping and fire station alerting. The city's GIS administrator, that's Geographic Information Systems Administrator, along with the Information Technology Department, contributed to this analysis. Our current fire station alerting system uses a radio frequency to notify the fire stations of an emergency call. The radio frequency notification system is unreliable at both stations. Dispatch notifications are often inaudible and frequently transmit over the PA system. In 2017, the Madison Heights Police Department received a new computer-aided dispatch system. The new CAD system can work with a third-party mapping software. The BRICS mapping software will immediately display call information on the Fire Department's vehicle computers. The mapping software gives fire personnel precise incident location, call details, live updates, hydrant locations, size of water mains, pre-plans, real-time vehicle tracking, and address history. The current Fire Department mapping software does not support these functions. After an in-depth evaluation of the current systems and an evaluation of numerous solutions, the Fire Department has identified BRICS Incorporated as the most feasible and cost-effective solution that will improve and enhance both systems. This system will increase the reliability of notifications, quality of audio, and provide the department with additional features that will strengthen department operations. In the 2017-18 fiscal year budget, $8,375 has been set aside for this project. Staff and I recommend that council approve the three-year professional services agreement with BRICS Incorporated for the amount of $25,855. I would note that at the conclusion of the three-year contract, a BRICS maintenance agreement will continue at an annual cost of $2,376. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we approve the three-year agreement with BRICS Inc. for the amount of $25,855.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve a three-year agreement with BRICS Inc. in the amount of $25,855 regarding the fire station alerting and mapping software. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
If I may. Chief, can we ask you a couple questions?
Yes.
So this system here, are we ahead of the curve, or are we just catching up? I mean, is this best practices with other cities?
Yes, Your Honor, yes, that is correct. We'd be, we're right at the top then with this system. There's a few communities around Metro Detroit that have IP alerting, but we'd be one of the few, and that is the top-notch alerting system.
Awesome. What about the ones who are going to actually utilize this? Are they, is it in the trucks, or is it in the dispatch?
Both. The mapping is, the mapping part of the, that the company offers isn't in all the vehicles, but the alerting system will be housed at our fire station, which will be utilized by the dispatch center to dispatch the fire stations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
A question of Chief Lolita. I know that computers can break down. Do we have a backup plan should that not be working?
You know, I'm going to bring up Manardle here, who took the lead on the project, and trust me, he's a lot more adept than this than I am.
Okay.
Yeah, we will have a backup plan. We're going to keep our radio frequency alerting system as a backup. However, it's going to be integrated through our new IP-based fire alert, station alerting system, which would still make sure that, you know, the dispatch information gets relayed out to the necessary units, et cetera. There also are some other redundancies built in. So other than that, yeah, we are having some redundancies, because yes, everything does break down. We get that.
So we're protected no matter what?
Yes.
All right, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. All right, that carries, we'll go on to ordinances. We have two for review tonight. Ordinance number 2119, an amendment to add one ex officio member to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. It's second reading. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. At the August 28th council meeting, city council considered the first reading of a proposed ordinance amendment that adds one ex officio member to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to be filled by one Oakland County Parks and Recreation staff member. During the meeting, the city attorney indicated that the additional change, an additional change should be made to further clarify the language regarding the composition of the board. That change was later included in the motion to approve the proposed ordinance amendment on first reading. In addition, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss expressed a concern regarding the even number of voting members on the board and suggested a possible consideration of adding an additional voting member to the proposed amendment to make the composition of the board an odd number. Attached and presented for council's consideration on second reading are two proposed ordinance amendments, options A and B. Option A is the original version of the proposed ordinance amendment with the added language discussed at the August 28th council meeting, as suggested by the city attorney and which was added to the original motion. Option B includes basically what was in option A, and it adds one additional board member from residents of the city at large to bring the voting members of the board to an odd number of 13, as suggested by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss. I would also clarify that each of these proposed amendments include that the DPS director is one of the ex officio members from the city, as we no longer have an assistant city manager, so that's, that's just a title cleanup. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, Mr. Sherman.
Just to clarify, option A is 15 total members with 12 voting members. Option B is 16 total members with 13 voting members.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I'll move the, the original ordinance to get the discussion on the table, which I guess would be A, the way we're doing it tonight.
Option A.
Option A. I would move approval on second reading of option A, ordinance 219, which is an amendment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Yes, understood. Is there a support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
Support.
Okay, motion was made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to approve on second reading, ordinance number 2119, specifically option A. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
I want to get a clarification for the record, or on the record, from the attorney. Actually, less concerning to me is whether we're an even number or odd number. To my mind, what I'm concerned about is what is the quorum number? Is it the same in both instances? Because that's been the issue. We have a common problem, which, put an asterisk on this, we need to talk about one of these days. The boards that meet at 5:30 in the afternoon or prior, are having troubles getting quorums. This is one of them. And so I'm, it's more the quorum issue that I'm concerned about than whether it's even or odd, or...
It would be the same in both cases.
Be the same. Eight would be the constitute of quorum in either case.
Seven.
Seven would be the working quorum. Okay. Okay. Well, let's hear from somebody else then.
Discussion, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor. At the same quorum amount, we get the opportunity here to solve what might be a potential issue down the road. The master plan for Parks and Recreation goes through this board, and so that would be the single biggest issue that this board will vote on, and if by chance it deadlocked, this could have stopped that. And so, you know, my, you know, my, I guess, alternate version, option B here, would fix a potential issue down the road without affecting quorum. We'd already have alternates on this board, so we'd be able to fill the board seat without any issue, and it gives us the opportunity to fix a problem now that we might perhaps get in the future. I'm not saying that we will. Very rarely do we ever, you know, have, you know, those types of split decisions coming off of a board, but even in the last four years, we've had a couple of contested issues that have gone through Parks and Rec specifically, where if in those cases it had been split, there would have been a lot more, it would have been a more challenging situation for us. And so I'm trying to look into the future. We're doing, we're doing this anyway as, as an ordinance amendment. If we weren't doing this, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't have proposed it, because the rarity of that wouldn't really constitute bringing it up for that issue alone, but because we are already amending this to add the Oakland County Parks person as an ex officio member, it makes sense for us to also add a voting member to then bring it to an odd number with the tie-breaking vote essentially. So I'd like to make the alternate motion to adopt option B, that would add the addition of one at-large member to bring the board to an odd number.
Is there support for the substitute motion? Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
Support, please.
Okay, so, let's see, a substitute motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, supported by Councilman Soltis, to approve ordinance number 2119 on second reading, but using option B. So we'll discuss and vote on that. If it's voted in the affirmative, it'll kill the original motion. So, any discussion on the substitute motion? Option B?
Yes, Your Honor. I just was going to say, I know it's politically incorrect, but I, I really don't have a preference in whatever the, I mean, I really, really don't. Just anything that avoids me going into a zombie state tonight, so. I'm going to vote yes on whatever the chair puts in front of me, and so I'm, I'm good with it. If the rest of council wants to go with the original, I'm good with that.
I, I agree with the councilman. I haven't lost sleep over the differences between these, so I appreciate the Mayor Pro Tems' encouragement to unbalance the structure of this. Discussion on the substitute motion? Okay, so I'll restate the motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to approve on second reading, ordinance number 2119, option B, which, as the city, Assistant City Attorney clarified, will include 16 members, with 13 of those members voting. Last chance, any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. All in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. All right, the motion carries 7:00. All right, there's no need to go back to the original motion, so we'll continue on the agenda. G2, ordinance 2121. Mr. Myers, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The fiscal 2018 adopted goal plan includes a goal to eliminate billing for emergency medical response costs for residents of the city. Staff has prepared, and the city attorney has prepared a proposed ordinance amendment for council's consideration that would waive emergency medical response costs not paid for or covered by their insurance carrier for a responsible party that is a resident who is permanently residing in the city of Madison Heights.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council adopt on first reading ordinance 2121, which is a EMS resident fee waiver.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
I support that.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve on first reading, ordinance number 2121, EMS resident fee waiver. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, yeah, I, I just wanted to thank the staff for bringing this forward. I think it, I think it's, it's a very popular and appropriate act on the, on the part of the council and the community by way of explanation. In the past, what we, what we would do, understanding we have a voted millage for a ALS service, but then if, let's say there had to be a run to your house, they would bill your insurance company for whatever the, the excess fee would be. If the insurance company didn't, didn't pay, then they would look to the individual resident. It was a burr under the saddle of a lot of residents, a lot of folks who said, "I'm already paying a millage, why are you hitting me twice?" Well, it happens. We will still try to access insurance funds under this system, but the burden will not be on the resident. The resident is paying enough, Lord knows they pay enough in taxes, the support of Fire Department, Police Department, and all the rest. So, thank you very much, and thanks to the council. This was a, this really was a team effort on this project. There was a little tight on money. Obviously, whatever money you deduct, on the one hand, from the budget is going to have to be made up for somewhere else, but through some belt tightening, I think that this is really a, a plus. And just, just to, to just put a note on the, the question, this is people who are living here full-time, which by the way, is going to show up as a, an amendment to the ordinance, or not an amendment, but a, an adjustment, a tweak. I'm going to come to you in a second. But if you live in an apartment, you pay taxes in your rent, since we assume the landlord isn't playing Santa Claus. So anybody who lives in the city of Madison Heights is covered under this plan. And there was a slight adjustment. Mr. Mayor, could I, could I ask you to recognize the attorney for a quick...
Yes, Mr. Sherman.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I added what the definition of permanently residing means, and this is based on state law. The phrase permanently residing means a place where a person has his or her true fixed and permanent home to which, whenever absent therefrom, he or she intends to return and continue to reside therein until another permanent home is established. So that is a definition that is under state law as to permanent residency.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, so that my comments regarding people who are renting is correct under that definition?
It's for, they're permanently residing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis.
I've got a couple questions. One is on the fiscal issue. What if the patient does not have insurance?
Hmm? They're not billed.
What if the patient... I'm sorry?
They're not billed. The insurance is billed, but there is no second attempt to recover.
Right, but if the patient has no insurance...
Well, I would assume that's the same thing.
They're not billed, providing, provided that they're a permanent resident of Madison Heights.
So the whole, here it says if they have insurance, the balance that's not paid by the insurance would be covered by the city, but if they have no insurance, the whole bill would be covered by the city?
Yes.
Your Honor, yes, that's correct.
Great. That's awesome. Chief, can I ask you a couple more questions? So I think Councilman Corbett's right, this is a home run, this is awesome. Myself, working in private EMS, there were times where patients didn't want to go because they didn't want the bill or the balance of it, and you know, it's, it's a tough choice sometimes. So I think this is really good. Again, is it, are we ahead of the curve on this, or other municipalities doing this?
It ranges, there's many different varieties that are doing it, different ways. They were doing it the same way we were doing it currently, and some other cities do it where they do waive the cost. So it's, it's all over throughout the southeast Michigan. But this, what we're adopting in this first reading is, is nothing unusual.
But it's still a win-win?
Yes, for the resident, definitely. Thank you.
Your Honor, one more point. Our adopted fiscal 2018 budget reflects this reduction in revenues already as part, we went ahead and put that in the budget based on council's adoption of the goal plan, so it's been factored in.
Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
I would just like to say that this is exactly why I love the council goals process. For those who don't know, we go, we go off-site, we meet multiple times, and we try to determine where budget savings would go, should we find them. And so the last meeting that we had for the goals meeting, we had a projected amount of savings, and the reduction in revenue that we're assuming here was a part of that discussion in the goals process. And so it was a, it was a great idea by Councilman Corbett, and this is one of those excellent ideas that came from, from that goals process, and I appreciate that process a lot. I appreciate innovations like this, particularly something like this where a resident is getting a really bad situation compounded. You know, a resident that's had, you know, had an illness or an accident and had to be transported via, by EMS, is then having that compounded, not just because they've already, you know, paid taxes through the millage, but compounded because that's, that's an additional pain on the experience that they went through. And I'm, I'm glad that we were able to find the budget savings to do this, and I look forward to doing more items like this going forward.
Thank you. Has anyone stated the revenue numbers? The, it was brought up? Yeah, and so like, total, I saw Mr. Corbett's goal, you know, broke down the numbers and it showed on an annual basis, we're collecting a little over $400,000 in ambulance revenue, mostly collect, you know, mostly paid for by insurance and Medicare. It's that $19,000 that... It's that $19,000 that people have no coverage for, so it's relatively speaking, we're talking 5 percent, just under 5 percent? It's a great idea. Any other discussion?
I was just gonna say, if I could, Your Honor, just to follow up on Mr. Saltis's comment. It's not, it's one of those things where, as a group, we're able to take care of that, but that's, you know, two, three, $400, I don't even remember, what was the billing per average? It was like $400 or something, or I don't -- the average bill on a run?
Your Honor, it depends on the type of service we're providing. Seven, $800 to $400 for a basic run.
Yeah, and that's a lot for families to have to dig out of pocket, 'cause usually that incident leads to more medical costs.
Yeah, actually.
Which leads to more -- so it's really a nice thing that the community can do. So, thanks, you.
All right, thank you. Is that the final word? Any other discussion? All right, a motion was made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilwoman Scott, to approve on first reading, ordinance number 2121, EMS resident fee waiver. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. There's no unfinished business this evening, so can I have a motion regarding the minutes of August 28?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council adopt the minutes of the meeting of the 28th as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to adopt as printed the minutes of the regular meeting of 8/28/17. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Would City Council like to make any nominations to boards and commission seats tonight? All right. All right, here are none. We don't have an executive session, so before we adjourn, I'll invite any closing comments from City Council. And in the tradition of Mayor Ed Swanson, he always liked to begin with Mr. Corbett.
Thank you, sir. We were about six months into our first term, and we were at a party, and I won't mention who said it, but Linda and I were watching across the room as Ed Swanson was working his way towards us, shaking hands and talking with people. And the host of our party looked at us and said confidently, said, "You know, Ed Swanson's always gonna serve one term as mayor. He told me he's gonna leave after one term." And my wife and I broke out laughing, and I don't think our host was real happy with us. I said, and I say tonight, Ed Swanson loved being mayor. He loved every minute of it. I think if he had to do it again, he would have done the end of his tenure differently, but that wasn't, but there was no malice and no vanity in him. He accepted the judgment of the voters and went into retirement with the same grace and elegance that he had conducted himself for the preceding sixteen years. He really enjoyed it. It was a way for him to meet people, to talk to people. Again, from early in our tenure, I remember that he got bored with whatever, we were at some conference, and he went outside with his pipe to go sit down, and the rest of us were wandering around, I think it was the Clarks, I think it was Elaine and Linda and I. And after about a half hour or so, we realized we'd lost somebody, we'd lost the mayor. And we went out on the front porch, and there he was, talking to anybody who walked by, telling jokes, making stories, and that was really how he operated. For him, working in the city, being mayor was a chance to meet with people, to interact with people. He would always tell you he wasn't a politician, but those are the guys you gotta look out for. Those are the guys who get eight terms as mayor. He was solid, he was honest, he enjoyed it, and he could argue with you all day long, and the next morning, it was like it never happened. So I wanna thank him for his service. There's no sadness, I don't think that's how he'd want it, and that wasn't how he lived his life. So, thank you, Ed. We enjoyed your tenure, we appreciated your service to this community, in every corner and nook. There's evidence of you having been here, having worked, and just thank you very much. Unrelated to anything else, we'll be resuming office hours this week at the library, 1:00 to 3:00. If anybody'd like to stop in and talk about anything related to the city, a complaint, a compliment, an idea, a problem with the city service, feel free to stop in, we're just in the, usually in the first conference room off of the front desk there at the library. I've always said, if 1:00 to 3:00 isn't convenient, then give the manager's office a call if you'd like to talk to myself or anybody else, and Mary in the office will coordinate an appointment for somebody. That's all I have this evening, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. So I was fortunate enough to have known Mayor Swanson for a couple decades, and, you know, I knew him as a, I knew him as a kid, I knew him as a young adult, running into him at Big Boy, I knew him serving on council, you know, I got the opportunity to overlap and to be able to serve with him, and it was an honor, you know. I think what everybody will say about Ed was, he served in a very selfless manner. You know, he put everybody else ahead of himself, you know, he'd be willing to open up his checkbook if he felt that the community needed something. You know, he'd spend hours talking to residents and shaking hands and making everybody feel just comfortable and at home here. And I think that that's something that I know I personally strive to emulate, and I think is, as Councilman Corbett mentioned, that, you know, you don't have to look very far in the city to see places where Ed has changed it forever, and I think part of the legacy that he planted in this city is the way that we serve. You know, he wasn't the first to serve in that manner, he won't be the last, but, boy, was he one of the best examples that I could cite. I got to serve on a mock council with him as a high school student, and then, you know, like, 15 years later, get to be sworn into office, two feet away from him, with him patting me on the shoulder and telling me, "Good job," and how proud of me he was. And, I mean, that's, first of all, that's an only-in-Madison Heights kind of story, right? And, second of all, I think that we're going to be seeing for generations now the impact that Ed made on this community, and I'm so, so absolutely honored to have known him, to have served with him, and just to have stood in awe of how he served this community. And so, I don't know, I think, I don't think that this is a sad time, as Councilman Corbett said. I'm really, though, I'm really happy to honor his legacy and to be able to talk about how amazing he really was and how much he meant to the city as a whole and to me personally. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Gettings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ed Swanson loved the Nature Center, he loved the open house that he was affiliated with, he loved the tree lighting ceremony, he always sponsored this, that, and the other thing. He was a great mayor. I used to love his stories in the conference room before the council meetings. He would go back to the '50s, '60s and tell all kinds of great stories, but to his family, his wife, his son, our condolences, and he'll be thoroughly missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was my distinct honor and pleasure to know and to work with Ed for the past 16 years. He was one of a kind. He was a successful businessman who displayed a lot of common sense and an incredible sense of humor. He always asked me how my parents were doing, and he reminded me a lot of my father. Ed not only loved cars, but he loved his family, especially Elaine, his wife of 65 years, and he loved this city. Ed was a good man, and we are all going to miss him.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor, yeah, in the 16 years that I worked with Ed, I've never seen a more consistently upbeat, positive ambassador for the city. Time after time, he wouldn't let negative issues get him down, and he comported himself with style, class, and humor, and Councilman Corbett said he loved being mayor, and that's certainly true, and he was humble about it, but I sense he always got real pleasure serving our residents and making positive things happen for them and solving their problems and working with the staff as a team. That was very important to Ed, I think, and he certainly helped us become and last as a great team, and we're gonna miss that. It isn't a sad time, I'm sad that the community has lost such a treasure, and my condolences go out to the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prince?
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Well, just a little thing. Elaine and Ed, Lois and myself, we used to go out for Sunday drives out in the country. Afterwards, we'd have dinner, and every time we went anywhere or I seen Ed, his last words were, "If there's anything I can do for you, let me know." And he was that way with everyone. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was very hard to hear the news that Ed had passed away. I just wanted to say a few other things about him. His wife Elaine was a wonderful friend of mine, as she was with everybody. He took such good care of him, and she of him as well, but I wanted to acknowledge their children's names. Dennis, who was married to Tina, David, who was married to Deborah, and Donette, his daughter, who was married to Daryl Cress. He had nine grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren, so he lived a long and very wonderful life. And I know that all of his children and his descendants feel very special to have been part of his family. And he was very historical-oriented, so I could ask him almost anything, and he would have the information about it, because his funeral home started in Madison Heights and went way back, and so he told me about all that. But in the Heritage Rooms, we have all of our mayor's honor, and I just wanted to read to you what we have under Ed's picture. Mayor Edward Swanson was the city's second-longest-serving mayor with 16 years of service. He was a strong promoter of citizen involvement in local government, especially through the filling of board and commission vacancies. He maintained an effective sense of humor, especially at public events. He was active in supporting the expansion of the district court and a new greatly expanded fire department facility with five bays. I'm sure you'll remember that. The former two-bay fire station was demolished, and the front of city hall was totally re-lanched, and the war memorial moved. The Little House on Hales on the youth center was developed. Mayor Swanson also continued his service to the city's library system as a member of the library advisory board that was created in his first term. In 2005, the city closed the branch library, and in 2007, the main library on 13 Mile Road was renovated, expanded, and made handicapped accessible. He presided for a period of extensive economic development activity, including the hiring of the city's first economic development director. So, Ed, there were so many things that you did for us. He was also a veteran in the U.S. Army in Korea. He was a funeral director since 1961 in South Oakland County, and, of course, he served as mayor for 16 years. He was also a member of the Madison Heights Rotary Club, and so I had the delight of eating lunch with him every Thursday when he came. And I can't leave his legacy without saying one of my favorite jokes that Ed always said. When we came around at the end of our Rotary meetings, we could give a dollar if we wanted to brag about something, and he would always brag about the things that were going on in Madison Heights. And, but I remember the funniest joke that he told, I just always remember it, is when he said, "Gee, I always remember, this is interesting, but all the people this day, when I read the obituaries, died in alphabetical order." And that was just, his wit and humor was always pervasive, and I know that to remember Ed is to remember him with laughter and enjoyment. He did so much for our city, and like I read, there are so many things that Mark said too that we will always look at and remember, that was done for Ed's tenure. And his tree, of course, is still out there, so I hope it lives a long life, but he will be remembered. The Historical Commission, I know, will want to set up a special display in his memory, so we will notify the citizens when that is done, and you can come and visit at any point. We might even have a separate celebration for him, for his life. But I want to thank you, Ed, for what you did for our city. Thank you. We will miss you terribly.
Thank you. Mr. Saltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 16 years ago, I remember, it was sunshining like today, it was nice out, and I remember hearing at work, noise by the TV, right? And I actually saw the second plane tragically hit the second tower, and I thought, oh my God. It was a very sad day. Right away, I called my wife at the time, to see if our kids were right, everyone's panicking. In the aftermath, you hear about 500 first responders die tragically. The county in Pontiac has this incredible tribute, a memorial tribute. I would suggest checking it out, it has even actual pieces of the building, and then it has all the names of the first responders that died. My condolences to the Swanson family. I knew him briefly, only a couple of years, four years ago when I was campaigning, this guy drives up, he says, "Hey, you." And I said, so I look over, and there's the mayor, he gets out, he says, "Keep up the good work." And I said, "Okay, I will." And then I remember the first day, the first council meeting, I didn't have a tie on. And after the council meeting, he pulls me aside and says, he whispers, "Make sure you wear a tie next time." So, I'm wearing, he used to wear that pink tie, so I'm wearing a pink tie in his honor, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saltis. Councilman Saltis, thank you for reminding us of the tragedy of September 11th. It's important that we're mindful of the victims, especially, well, not especially, but also the first responders who lost their life and those who responded, and the surviving families who still endure the pain. Thank you for that special tribute by video. Before I close the meeting, is there any further business before the City Council? All right, I'll close the meeting with Mayor Ed Swanson. His final meeting as mayor was November 9, 2015, and these are some of his words. So, Mayor Swanson stated, "It was an honor to serve as the Madison Heights mayor for the past 16 years, and he was humbled, appreciative, and honored to have done so. Mayor Swanson stated, 'He held the office of mayor in the highest esteem, and it was one of the greatest parts of his life.' Ed noted, 'He was blessed to have worked with great city managers, department heads, and great employees.'" And Mayor Swanson concluded his comments by stating, "He was proud to have been the mayor, he wished City Council the best of luck, and he thanked the citizens of Madison Heights for the opportunity to serve." And that was Ed Swanson in November 2015, and it's a sadness that we remember his life as he passed away yesterday, September 10, 2017. With that, we'll conclude tonight's evening. See you next time.